Okay, we're on. This is May eighteenth. Board of County Commissioners meeting. Would everybody rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jack is gonna be late, so I'm starting out from meeting today. This is the time reserved for public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Hillary, would you move the group there? Thank you.
Seeing none. Did you have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Did you see anything to correct? I did not.
No, I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay, and I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Two zero. Do you have any Commissioner comments or Committee reports?
So I had a QA meeting last Wednesday at Senior Village. All is well there. We have some good applicants for Maintenance Director up there as well as an Administrative Assistant. Also, so they're in the interview process. So things are looking good up there. And the only other thing that I had is I just wanted to extend a thank you to the City of Atchison, City of Effingham, City of Lancaster, and City of Huron for having representatives last night at our inner local meeting. I think it's, it was important, it was good to get clarity on everyone's stance and where they see the future of our 1% countywide sales tax. So I value everyone's opinion. It's nice to, again, nice to know where everyone stands so we can do the best we can here as a County Commissioner to move us forward in the best respect for the constituents and county residents.
Yeah, I would like to thank everybody involved and especially the county staff and put a lot of work into making your presentation to, to everyone even more of a success, so.
Yeah, I'll echo on that. Our county staff is amazing. Like, all of them do a great job. They, I feel like sometimes walking out of a meeting like that, some of them felt a little beat up that, that maybe they're not providing what is, what is asked for, but I can assure you anytime any requests came across my desk, they're on it providing everything that's ever been asked for. So I, I appreciate our team very much.
Other than that, I have a kneecap meeting on the twenty-seventh of May and then another, I have a Northeast Kansas area agents, the Agency on Aging on Thursday the third. And then the next Monday, I have a NEK multi-county health meeting on Monday the seventh. So those are my upcoming committee assignments that are coming up.
Do you know where our COVID numbers are in Atchison County?
I have, no, I, I do not. I have not looked this last week. Like I said, this, usually I do a lot of that and try to look at that every weekend. I was under the weather this weekend and did not process much. And then Monday was, everything that we done was geared for the joint meeting. So I do not, but I, I have, I'm on a COVID Act now is the site that I like to look at and I've got alerts. So if we have a major change, it sends me an alert. So I haven't seen anything come from them lately. It's been very accurate and very close to the state of Kansas numbers. It's just really accessible for me. So that's something that I like to access for information. Like to compare it when I do look at the numbers and, and see somebody else's ahead or behind on reporting or, you know, sometimes more than one source is valuable to kind of compare information.
And you, you have the Health Board meeting next week?
It's the seventh of June.
Okay. Does Lori present at those meetings?
They do a county by county update. So Christina does the overview of the whole agency.
Okay.
And then we break it down into, Lori will have an Atchison County presentation and then Brown and Jackson each do also. And then the different, they'll do the QAPI reports on like home health and hospice. That's someone else, you know, they have, so there's several presentations.
Okay. Well, you just follow up for us as the Commission to see, you know, if we are in the red zone and our COVID numbers are elevated to have her come before us as a Commission and give us updates. I think the public would appreciate to hear from our local health officer.
Sure.
I know we said that last week to Christina, but as you being our representative, I think it's important.
Wes just typed in the chat that there are fifteen active cases with one hospitalized.
Okay, thanks Wes. Appreciate that update.
Yeah, a lot of times, I know when there was one variant case that showed up, they were on it to, sometimes it don't come through Lori, but Lori and Wes and Bonnie are all integrated so much that, you know, it, it may come from Wes, but it's Lori's numbers. It's, so to me, it's one and the same because it's the one and the same source.
Yeah, and I think it's to the public, they, they look toward the Health Department and
Sure.
why we're not hearing from.
But I think if there is anything that was an alarm, I think that we would be notified and, and there wouldn't be no question that there would be an update.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. We have a EMS Commission report for the last month. It's been filed, members looked at as usual. Very good report. That will be included in on, if someone wants to see it, they can read it by accessing our minutes and it will be attached. New business before the board. Is there a time on this public hearing or does it just happen at any time? I don't have any documentation or anything.
I think Elizabeth was gonna join us for this and I don't see her on there, so maybe we can just. Right? She was gonna join if there were any questions over the CBPG.
Well, there's a person on, there's a gentleman on.
Trevor, he's for the Rural Preservation Grant.
Okay, shall we skip that and go on then, one? Okay, and circle that. We will come back to that. Carrie Sowers, Atchison Childcare Association.
Hello, everybody. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good. Good to see everyone. I know budgets are tight. I know this is something that the county is following suit with the city, but I just want to ask for one more year, please, to consider a request. We got a tax credit grant, as you know, so our bank account looks amazing, but the work is starting. The bathrooms are now tore up, the building has been tuck pointed. When we found, we found some other things when we're doing the work and could really, really use your support one more year, if at all possible. We are back full, which is great. COVID was a hard year on everybody and I'm, you know, I'm like you, I'm sick of hearing people say that, but unfortunately, it's just, you know, the truth. We've always been an exemplary program and a great asset to our county and city. This is the first step in economic development. If we're not here and we, people won't come here because we won't, they won't have quality childcare, not that there's not quality childcare in some homes and the other center here, our missions are just slightly different. I just wanted to ask and just ask your consideration.
Did I get that right? That the increase to six thousand was a one-time deal, a one-year deal? Was that what you led off with?
Yeah, I just asked that one more year, we could please receive those funds.
Are you saying the funds itself or the, the request is for double what normal has been? So I, I was unclear on whether you were asking for.
See, we've always gotten six thousand until last year, we got three, and I just figured that was because of the budget cut. And it may have been the last two years that was three, we're gonna look, but it used to be six, but I don't want to be greedy. I don't, I really, I don't.
I've got twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one both at three thousand.
Okay.
Approved. So that's what I was unclear on, if you were asking for a new one year or, you know, what, what that was, so.
Yeah, I was, yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Casey?
Yeah, I would like to ask you because I am very familiar with your organization and what you provide for Atchison County and it's amazing. I have no doubt in that, but I do have a question. As a County Commission, are there ways we can help support your organization outside of the annual funding? And, and what are some of those ideas that you have or how can we help as leaders of the county, support your mission and support your organization?
One thing, when I was speaking with Michelle Phillips, she told me on all of our, because you know, we have fundraisers, we did not last year because of COVID, and I think that's why we're in a, a spot. She asked that I send that directly to you all, so you could check to see if it could be sent out to county employees and like, for instance, when we do the Windmull and Twist fundraisers, or we do the pizza fundraisers, or we have garage sales, or our bake sale, or whatever we do, run through you so that you can help trickle it down and maybe we could get more support from your constituents as well.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't have any questions, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you guys so much. I hope you have a good rest of the day.
Thank you, you too.
Teresa's Benitez? Did I say that's the wrong, wrong or right?
No, that's correct. It's Benitez. And not sure if you can hear me. Yes, I'm with Happy Hearts and we are working with Adult Education and Family Literacy here in Atchison. We collaborate with Highland Technical Center so that our location is actually housed inside their buildings to save some of our expenses and it also helps our students because they can co-enroll not only in the Adult Education Program for the GED, but at the same time be enrolled in a career technical program at the college. And we also provide the Family Literacy Services where we teach parenting skills and for, for students who do not have an alternative method, we can help pay for their childcare if they are enrolled in our Family Literacy Program and participating in our classes. We're asking for the same amount that we normally receive.
I'm not really familiar with your day-to-day the way you do business. So do you have like classes that last like a month, or do you have multiple people in a room, or is this one-on-one education, or how does that work?
No, we have multiple people in classes. Normally, we would have about twenty-five, but with COVID, we have a limited enrollment to about eighteen students at a time. They are split into classes. They learn math and reading. Every student gets math and every student gets reading, language arts, and social studies. And then we have electives with science and family literacy, digital learning skills and occasionally there's different electives, but those are the main ones that we offer. Every student is different. Everybody comes in at a different skill level and we, we try to find out. Some, some students stay there for a couple of years and some people are done within a month, but that's, that's usually pretty rare. We test them when they come in to see what skills they have and what skills they need to be able to pass the GED test. And then we build their, their plan based on those skills.
Did you, was you able to have classes during?
Yes. Yes, we, what we did was we went online to begin with and we went back to the classroom in August, but with online capability still there, and I think we're gonna hold on to that. We still have quite a few people who prefer the online program and we're not limited to a classroom size by that. And, and it works out really well for people who are currently working and still want to get their GED taken care of. But we have been in the classroom since August. We have had to quarantine twice when instructors got COVID and we had a student got COVID. That was our first quarantine and then we had two instructors as well. Everybody, all of, all instructors have been immunized at this point.
So at any one time, how many students would you have, or does it vary from course to course?
It varies, but I would say in general about eighteen. Plus our, plus our online program, which probably has six or seven.
Yeah, I have some questions and I, I apologize. I'm, I'm not prepared for your part of the packet because you weren't on my agenda, so I, I apologize if my questions are something within here that you already explained. But I was just curious if there's any other organizations within Atchison County that provide similar services to what your organization does?
There are none. We are the only one.
Okay, and are you guys a five oh one C three?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Okay. And as far as adult basic education prep, does your organization help with career readiness as far as interview skills, leadership training for, for adults? Because some of the, some of the feedback from other organizations and companies within Atchison is, is the need to, to kind of teach those leadership skills because we have leaders in, in positions that maybe need a little more grooming, so to speak, or the, the support system? And I've been in several circles of conversation and, and no one is aware of an organization in Atchison County. I talked to the Extension Office and they had some programs that were similar, but I was just kind of understanding kind of how you identify your students and how you market to Atchison County as far as what the, what your services offer.
We, we partner with Highland Technical College and we do offer our students a transitions class, which can help them prepare for educational and also a, a job readiness class, which can help them with resumes, job search, interviewing skills, that type of thing. We do not charge anything to our students. We, we run a hundred percent on local donations.
Okay. And who, who else donates to your organization? Is, is it? Just, I mean, it's located in Atchison, so Happy Hearts is only Atchison County focused then.
Yes, yes. We, we also receive support from the United Way, from Benedictine Abbey, from the Eva Cray Association, Orshans, First Christian, Midwest MGP, I'm sorry, MGP. Courtney Turner.
Okay, so like local grants, you guys are writing grants and?
Hundred percent local grants, yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, I appreciate the information and helping me better understand your organization because you didn't have a history of, of knowing what all you.
Well, thank you for considering us.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your support.
And I should have prefaced that was, they had sent their information in timely. It didn't get on the agenda and so they were scheduled to come today.
Okay. I just wasn't prepared.
Sorry. And I think if there are any more questions that we can recall them or something like that, because since they were scheduled, that's, we haven't seen.
Absolutely. Sounds good. Thank you so much, Teresa. I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Anytime, anytime.
I have Jerry Henry next for Achievement, or yeah, Achievement Services, but I have not received it online iPad yet.
I think she was gonna print them out and bring them in.
Okay. We will skip that for now because well, yeah, why don't we just hold for a second and see if the, the ad information's been printed and.
Want to go on to Humane Society?
This, I think it'll be really quick to whether to see if the information isn't there, we will move on and come back. Should be right back. Always technical glitches. Okay, we have not received it or?
So Jerry, Michelle said that she hasn't gotten it yet, but she's been noticing within the past year that every time the IRS nine ninety tries to come through, it's too large for our servers. So I don't know if you want to try and send everything like send like the nine ninety separate and then, you know what I mean, send like two different emails to see if that works? But I think that's why we haven't received it at all.
Okay, okay.
And we didn't know that you had been trying to send it, so we didn't know to say, hey, we haven't gotten it.
Yeah, I apologize for not checking back, but.
Our fault too. I'm so sorry.
Okay, I'll, I'll go have them resend, split it in two and resend it.
Yeah, see what, yeah, and then I'll check with Michelle again for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, or would you rather wait until next week, or do you want to present later today?
If, if it's, okay, if you, I could do next week. I didn't know, I know you were under a time crunch, but I could do next week.
Is, is that possible for, to do? I mean, we don't have the information here and, and we like to have it ahead of time, so if you don't mind, I think that would be the best way of, of either next week or the week after, I think we could probably get it in, but.
Should be fine. And then if, if for whatever reason, we're still not getting it by email, maybe we can just get a hard copy and then we can get it to them that way for you.
Okay, I will, I, I'll probably do both. I'll send it and I'll just run it up to the courthouse twice again, so. All right, so, so next, next Wednesday? Okay, next Tuesday, twenty-fifth, okay. I'm good with that. Thank you. I apologize.
Also sorry for the inconvenience. I, I don't know where the, it got hung up at, but you know, these things happen and and I, I hope it don't inconvenience you too far, so.
No, I, I just, I apologize for not double checking back, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll see you next week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next I have Debbie, Deborah Geiger from Atchison Art Association. That's what my.
Yeah, but she's not gonna be off today.
She's not, oh.
She was rescheduled.
I didn't get that update. So Diana Middleton, Atchison, you can manage aside.
I'm Gina Hart.
Okay.
But anyway, we want to thank you for the opportunity to apply for the funding of Atchison County this year. And our mission remains the same. It's, it's to protect animals from abuse in the blood. Last year.
No, you're fine.
So last year, we took in six hundred and thirty-three animals. In twenty twenty, we started with ninety on hand and took in two hundred and fifty-five strays, transfers. And we also gave food to a hundred and eighty-five pet owners who needed food in the community. We will come to us and ask, you know, so that at least the animals can be fed and keep healthy. During the, during the pandemic here, we have, haven't been able to do our free immunization every year. For the community so that they can have their pets vaccinated. Not where at least we know if they can't afford to go to a vet. These pets are vaccinated against rabies and now that we have to help them. Yeah, we, we offer a low-cost spay and neuter and we take half of the, the cost of the spay and neuter so that somebody on the budget that can't afford it, they can get their pets spayed and neutered. We also had our HVAC system replaced this year. We needed that. It was, it was a twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four. Twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. But we had to keep the heating floor going for the animals. Now this, we, our next goal was we have a roof that's moving. We've had a bid, but that bid was put in months ago and it was for sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We have a flat roof and with LMO constructions under the so that it's.
Pitch.
Pitcher. And but the supplies, I'm sure, have gone up now, so we don't know what that bid will be at this current time.
I spoke to LMO yesterday. They're coming out on Thursday to take another look and see what we want. They just were going to repair what's there and this roof's twenty years old and it leaks and we fixed it and it leaks and we fixed it and it leaked, so we thought we need to put part of the building, about a third, has a metal roof that slinks and that's great, but the two wings on the end which actually house animals are still flat roofs, so they're going to be coming out and giving us a bid and I'm sure it's gonna be considerably higher than the sixteen thousand, especially since wood and plywood have gone up so much.
Yeah.
But we try to get matching grants, you know, maybe get a third from one organization, third from another. And we have some generous donors who will help us out, but every bit helps.
So reading that, I didn't see an actual request number. Is that in? Did you see that actual number? I didn't know if it changed or?
What did you give us last year?
Three thousand.
Yeah.
No, one, Humane Society? One thousand.
I.
Humane Society, twenty twenty approved and twenty twenty-one approved. But I, I didn't read in the packet, I'd seen your expenses and things, but I didn't see an actual request number, so that's the reason I was trying to find that.
I'm gonna ask for five, I don't know if you can do that much, but with this big expense coming up, and um, we we've had a lot of trouble retaining help, Diane's been there forever, and she makes uh decent money, not anything to write home about, and she does an amazing job, not just taking care of the animals, but doing a lot of stuff online, keeping her place spotless. We recently had a phone call from a man in California, saying that he wanted to give us a small donation uh of stock. And uh I said, well, how in the world did you find Humane Society of Atchison? He said, I went on Charity Navigator, and you have an A-plus rating. So for a little local Humane Society, that's.
That's a new one, I've never heard of that, didn't know that that was uh available.
Charity Navigator, yeah, they, I think it's mainly so people know they're not getting scammed, you know? Because some of these organizations that ask for money are, you know.
Yeah.
But uh, the the roof is really a necessity, and then we also need a new van. The one we had was donated by KP, and now it's in two thousand and three, and it's had a lot of problems. And since my husband retired, we don't get free uh later, so uh, anyway, but the roof is a great thing.
Casey, did you have any questions?
Um, I would just tell you that I'm impressed by your social media presence, I think that that's really awesome. It engages citizens and like really shows, wow, you guys are really doing a good job, um.
That's Diane.
Yeah, it's it's good, um.
She needs help, we're like everybody else, we can't find good help.
I know, it's unfortunate, it seems um to be that way across the county, unfortunately. But I would just ask you, as a county commissioner, how we could support your mission and your organization outside of the funding? Um, are there other ways um that we could support you guys um if if the funding wasn't wasn't the key there? Um, I know you guys do, you're always in need of supplies, um, I try to follow along with that and help share that on social media. And we had talked about, you know, doing maybe a drive up here, because with the treasurer's office and the county courthouse, we have people in and out all the time, where we could set up a bin and help collect, or you know, whatever, and maybe you guys have other ideas. We just, we want to help as as the commissioners of Atchison County, we believe in your organization, and we know it's it's good, but are there other ways that we can support you?
Well, most people that want to give us supplies, bring them directly to the shelter.
Okay.
And um, or if they can't do that because of lack of proper transportation, they, you know, we would be willing to go and and get things. What one of the previous persons was saying about um uh helping to advertise fundraisers and things, we weren't able to have anything much last year, but we expect to have some fundraisers, and if you could help get that word.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
A lot of people send to Amazon, too.
Yeah, yeah, if you.
Donations don't.
They'll just ship it directly to your facility, okay? Are you guys also familiar with the Amazon Smile Program? Okay, I didn't know if you knew that, because um I know that we we do that for Atchison Childcare, um, and we learned about it through them, and it's it's pretty awesome, like as someone who, I mean, I think at this day and age, pretty much everyone will buy something through Amazon, and to get that notification that this dollar amount went to your local organization is pretty awesome, so. Okay, well, thank you ladies very much for all of the information, and um I think that's all of my questions right now, but thank you so much, and this is Art, you did a great job presenting. I I had to present last night and was super nervous too, so I can totally sympathize with you.
Oh, the first time's always nerve-wracking.
Yeah.
The last time they did it, I had to sit there by myself and talk to a television screen, and I am totally technically challenged, so I'm unsure what I was.
That's me. As you see me reading through my papers over here, but that's my system.
So, you know, whatever amount you can give us would be a blessing.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
We always want chlorox.
Chloro, we need chlorox.
Okay.
Maybe somebody has a little a vehicle that's that would be good for transporting the animals that they would like to donate.
Okay.
Um, uh, you know, we also wash machines and dryers.
Oh, you need washing machines?
If anybody has a washing machine and dryer that's in good condition, that still runs, and we always need that.
Because we do lots of laundry.
Every day, but they will clean, Diane keeps it, and they and they each dog, they they have comforters, and that they put out at night, and those all have to come up, they're not used again until they're washed.
And one goes on all day.
Are you, are you guys open um Monday through Saturday, or?
We're open Monday through Friday uh from ten to five, and then on Saturday from ten to two.
Okay, and do you ever need volunteers?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I think it would be fun to do like a county volunteer, like a county staff volunteer on a Saturday or something, it'd be, it'd be fun, something.
But you gotta get there early, because the work is early, you know? We have volunteers that come in the afternoon, and I mean, yeah, they can wash dishes and do laundry, but the real work, you know, the struggle.
The dirty work.
Yes.
Starts early.
Which I've been doing at home for about sixty years, so I know exactly what it involves.
Absolutely, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
You bet. Okay, any other old or unfinished business?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If not, move on to county council updates. Nothing, okay, is there any need for an executive session today? Let's see. Again, there's a, this is a public comment time. Oh. I missed that, thank you very much, um, did we ever get any information or anything on that?
I I don't have. So it's a public hearing for grant consideration for Kansas Department of Commerce for Small Cities Community Development Block Grants. And basically, um, we have signed with an administrator to help us with the CD, CDBG, round three grant, which allocates uh a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it allows us to apply for those funds, and the only caveat is any small businesses within the city of Atchison would not be eligible for that. Um, and the reason is because they were awarded round one, um, so this would be for small businesses in Atchison County outside of the city of Atchison. Um, so this is just our public hearing where we present that, and there'll be more information to come.
Okay, so I'll hereby open the public hearing uh for grant consideration for Kansas Department of Commerce for Small Cities and Community Development Block Grant Funds under the CDBG dash CB category. Any comments? So I'll hereby close the public hearing.
There's a chat up there, I don't know what that is.
That was from Wes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, does that suffice? Yes. Overall basis, okay?
That's it, thank you.
And thank you for pointing that out, um, out of practices being ahead of me.
You're doing great.
So uh we did a pub- uh public comment, if there's nothing further, do I hear a motion to adjourn at one forty?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.